Look at that.
All right, good morning, everybody. Happy New Year coming up and Merry Christmas. It's still Christmas, you know, people forget that. It's got 12, well, how many more days now? Seven or so? Got to get a count, roughly seven. I still have some Christmas shopping to do. But welcome, everybody. I am Commissioner Bill Kanda, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners for Custer County. It's Thursday, December the 30th, 2021. Hand them your phones. Mute them if you got them. And this meeting is being recorded by Kelly. It's an official recording. We've got Zoom and Facebook or YouTube as well. And we will call this meeting in order, and I would like to have the wetmore guy that's got all the new clothes say the pledge if he could.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, roll call, Kelly.
Commissioner Candy.
Present.
Mr. Flower. Mr. Day.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Not present.
And Court Chief Board Kelly Henry.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Audience introduction will start over in the corner.
Dana Day-Watmore.
Luke Sett Westwood.
Andrew Zeller Westcliffe.
Carol Bangor Wedmore.
Back.
Marcy Gray Westcliffe.
Good album, it's called The Down.
Yeah, John, yeah, DC Edman.
And Lisa Vivens, Finance and Human Resources.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, everybody. And if there's somebody online that comes up, we'll get their name and we'll then we'll start with whatever question might be. Time comes. Men, the agenda. I do not have anything, Tom.
Oh, sure.
Good. None here?
Um, I have something that I need to talk to you guys about. It's a precinct thing.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know if you want to. I was going to put it on the agenda for the mid-January meeting for approval, but I need to discuss it with you first. So I don't know if you want to add that, or we just want to do it during our last public.
Let's do it during last public conference.
Okay.
The discussion, then we can have a good run of the vote on it. It's okay.
Yeah, there's nothing to discuss.
Yeah, I heard that that was in the works, and I should have asked you about it soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, good. All right. Approval of minutes, we don't have any. Right now. And Commissioner, I, Tom, you can start. Yeah, let's go.
Oh, yes. I attended the Justice Center meeting the other day. And went over a few things. Basically, going to be looking for guidance from us. So I am bringing that to us here. Because that needs to, we need to have some sort of a decision from us as to how we're going to move ahead shortly.
They were recommending you all, they were a meeting to work the way ahead.
Tried to, it was kind of a debriefing of what happened and everything along those lines and trying to figure out the path moving forward. And it basically boils down to where we need to decide in here how we want to pursue that moving forward. And so time flies, so we need to, first part of the year here.
Did money, you need to have a option or something discussed.
We need to discuss the options and get things moving on that so that we've got direction whether we're going to pursue another ballot initiative or if we're going to try something different, or how we move forward with that. And that's a decision we need to make. So I told them I would bring that to us and I'll probably bring it up again a time or two if we're not moving very fast.
I am on the mid-month meeting. Get, maybe between then and there, we can get.
Yeah, I think we could all be kind of thinking of how we need to, what we think we need to do to move forward and we can have it on the agenda for that mid-month. Um, I've also been approached through this past year, the court security meetings have fallen by the wayside as well because of everything. So I've been approached to see if we could get those set back up so that they can, they will be meeting again on a regular basis, I guess. And I don't know if that's a decision we need to make, or if that's just something, I'm not sure who all was involved in those because I have not been. I know, I think Mike and court personnel, I don't know if the commissioners were involved in those or not.
What did they call them?
Court security meetings.
For general security issues or what? I don't know.
I am.
Kelly, do you know?
Um, it seems like you guys were involved in that. I don't know to what extent. Mike, Mike should be, he's the.
Well, maybe I can reach out to Mike or something then and get some more information on that. Maybe we can get that set back up to for those happening again.
I do not. No.
Um, I have been working with Braden and with Jackie on that workshop for the planning commission. And I believe we have a date set up for January 10th at 9:30 to to meet with the planning commission and Jackie to go over some of the issues there.
Yeah, get the board commissioners together with them later.
Uh, that was my question as to whether we needed to have all three of us there, or if you guys want to.
I think it, I think it needs to come to the board eventually. I think you need to get together and get them thinking their issues and know the issues that we have, and then let's get them together as a board with them to discuss.
So if you, yeah, if you guys want to do that as a board, then.
I think so. Don't you, Tom?
So if it works for you guys, then that will take place January 10th at 9:30.
That's a, well, you can have, there's two ways to handle it. You get together like you were planning to discuss the issues because they saw it. And then come and set up a meeting with the board separately so we can make a decision. You see, that would be probably the best way to.
Yeah, I think a lot of them can actually be worked through without having to turn to the board. I think if their, the different issues are brought to light, I think some of us, not all of them can actually be worked.
See, that would be the right way to do it because they can bring it forward and give the options and they can brief us. And then there may be some things hanging out or some things we want to change or and then we can make a decision.
So I'm good either way. If you guys want me to just handle the meeting on the tent. And what, if there's anything that's not able to be worked through at that time, we can bring it to the board, or we can have it as a board.
We're going to have to have it presented as a board anyway because we asked to make sure we ironed out the issue. So we need to see what, what it wants.
So whatever your plager is, guys.
I like, that's a question. I like you. You said, handle that meeting.
Okay, I'll handle the meeting then on the tent. Okay, I want to make, I just wanted to verify that and make sure. So, and then I was approached.
Kevin, what, what location is that meeting going to be on January 10th? I'd like to be aware.
That has not been.
Hasn't been determined yet. Do we have to check the court?
Um.
How many is there? Potentially.
You might check.
Check with Kathy. Yeah, okay.
If it takes more than this room.
Yeah. Uh, and then I've been approached because the bid for the flagging for the Highway 96 overlay has been let. So and there were questions put forth to me because of all the fiber that's going to be filed up through there. So the questions that were put forth to me were, are they going to get the cable plowing?
From who?
On that broadband. That's coming up 96, correct?
Yeah.
Part of it.
One of them, one.
They were curious as to whether the cable was going in before the overlay or if they were going to overlay it and then come and plow.
If the overlay's happening this year, no cable.
Yeah, it normally, it normally happens to where you get the overlay and then somebody comes in and cuts it.
They're not, what they're planning on doing is knock up the whole center necessarily. It's on the side is what they prefer. I don't know. But it's not the broadband thing that's going to happen for a couple of years.
Yeah, I didn't figure it was, so. Um, and then my last thing that I've got is I have reached out. Of course, Braden's working on these other classes, but I have reached out to Trent Buschner. And visited with him a little bit as far as.
Commissioner or a.
Commissioner at Yuma County. He's taught a parliamentary course for CCI before. And he would be willing to come and do something for us here. And visiting with Braden, we have thought that even if we did put something on like that to uh, open that up to our other committees such as the planning commission and those that need to use that. So that we could all have a refresher on that. And he's in Yuma County, but he said he'd be willing to do it. I've reached out to him because Chip had mentioned his name. That being said, I'm sure we have other people around here that would be qualified as well. So.
Even Andrew. You could do that for too many years.
So I would kind of.
See what.
I would kind of like to visit with you guys here a little bit, and I'd kind of like to get a, I would like to move forward with it, but it's not a decision for me to make. It's a decision for us to make. So I would like to I guess have a.
Did he say what?
Permission to move ahead with that. I have, we haven't gotten that far. I just reached out to him to see if he would be interested in doing it and.
We need to know enough ahead so that we can get boards, peoples together. We got to get boards appointed too.
And that would be part of the moving ahead. If you guys were agreeable to me moving ahead and getting something like that set up.
I like the idea. What do you think, Tom?
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile. Because I know I came in out of a bunch of different equipment, and now I'm sitting here and I have no earthly idea.
Blade to move or.
So, you know, I didn't have to use any of that to run that equipment. So I am sorely lacking myself. So I know it would be great for me. So if that's okay, then I'll move ahead. I'll work with Braden and coordinate and then either reach back out to Trent or if you can find somebody local that would be willing to do it, that would work well as also.
Both. There's always different ways of looking at it.
So, all right, that's all I have.
The only thing I add to it that I have is Clint Smith is still laid up. Everybody, we made that announcement before. And he has had a good, as far as I know, I haven't been able to get official word from him directly because he's been, they had him in a position in the hospital. He can only have one visitor at a time. If you've been, if you haven't been to the hospital lately, being very cautious. And you use it up one, one day, you go in. As a matter of fact, I took my brother down and there was a choice of me going in or his wife. That was an easy one for me because once you go in, you're stuck in, and that's the visitor that you have to take care of. So Clint wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. That's why he appreciates everybody's thoughts. But we'll see how that plays out. Meantime, we have a substitute right now that I contacted and he's certified, and that's Dan Slater. I'll forward everybody the contact info on him. He's Silver Cliff attorney as well, and he's certified for county as well. So that's the good part. And he's done a couple of things, very reasonable price, nothing, because it was easy to review a contract that he reviewed with Silver Cliff, for example. But we will pay him. I asked him to send us an invoice depending on the meetings, then he attends and all that. As a matter of fact, he did review the contracts today. And I didn't think it was worth his time to drive up here and be here at this meeting, but he sent his advice to us in an email that we all received. So we'll be doing that. Also, substitute, you see on the agenda item, we have Tina has submitted her resignation and she'll, we'll discuss that later. And that's going to put us in a bind because we won't have an admin. And luckily, we have Kelly and Peggy going to be substituting where necessary, like for the border health and other things that we need to fill in for what Tina's been doing for us. Of course, we can't compensate for everything. Tina was everywhere. She did a great job. Thank you, Tina, for keeping up. And I told her, she willed me the coffee warmer here, and I said, I'm going to keep it because and give it back to her when she eventually returns again someday. She may, will never know.
They got to have a call.
Got to have a call. That's right. Anyway, thanks Peggy and thank her for us too, Kelly. And then we'll talk about getting mad in the paper with Lisa here. Okay, and that's all I have. Anybody else? Questions? Okay, we've got, since there's no attorney items, how about you, Tina?
Okay, I have a couple of things to talk about. Wanted to let everyone know that there was a COVID relief fund that came out of third round, and I was able to process the paperwork. And they have, they're currently processing, which we're receiving $50,000 relief. This week. It sounds good. I'm letting you know that. And then I wanted to make a recommendation of for you guys to consider. I think it'd be very helpful for Braden to get some HR, human resource certification. And there's an organization called SHRM. And I did send the information to Braden as well. I think that would help him and the county as far as HR practices and things like that.
I think that's a great idea. And I saw your discussion on that. That's, I like that idea.
And then there was another additional training that I sent to Braden about, it's called Skill Path, and there's training anywhere from computer skill training, like Word, Excel, PowerPoint, things like that. But there's also training on there for like interpersonal development, things like that. So it's a wide range of different types of topics. And that was something I also recommended to him. And that one I know is like $450 a year, but everybody can do it. Whereas I don't know the cost for the SHRM.
I like.
I just wanted to let you guys know that.
That's great. The first one is SHRM?
It's called SHRM. It's S-H-R-M dot org, the website. S is in Sam, H is in Howard, R is in Robert, N is in Michael dot org.
So we would look for Braden to come and ask, look at schedule, figure it out.
Because I did send the information as well.
That's great. Good, thank you. Okay, any public comments? Whoa, it's like five hands. Anybody online? Well, let's, let's give the online guys a chance first. All right, so in the back. Go ahead.
Mr. Day, I just have a comment on your parliamentary, finding somebody that could teach or is experienced in Westcliffe. And Jackie Barnes is one of the best parliamentary people around. She's spent hours and hours and hours with the DAR friends, and all that goes back east. So I don't know if she's willing to do it, but she would be. She's the one to call. I don't know about you, Andrew.
No, go for.
His arm was down.
I couldn't tell if that was a nod or a shake or all or nothing.
I was just acknowledging that he's a wizard and maybe he could certify it after the class.
Thank you for that. Broken.
Okay, who else has their hand up? Billy? He has a handout.
I do. Don't you love handouts?
I'm going to say dark skies all the time.
Oh, snap.
Doesn't say dark skies, so it's a good.
No, it's a code of ethics. So I'm going to make a public comment based on the things that have gone on this past month. I may be out of date because I missed the last meeting, but this is what I want to express. Commissioners are fully responsible for managing the business affairs of the county, including the people who work for the county. The Colorado Revised Statutes 30-11-107 provides a full description of the powers of the Board for County Government. Passing another resolution 21-24 that sets up an office of managing commissioners wouldn't be needed if the three elected commissioners would self-manage themselves to work, know their personal strengths and weaknesses to do their jobs, show considerate civil conduct, make sound decisions, and most importantly, abide by a code of ethics. The commissioners serve as top management and are expected to work together for the good of the county as a whole. Jackie Hobbie's revelation of sexism and her frustration with the PC and B O C C over STRs has revealed cracks in the governing culture of Custer County. I have participated in and observed the entire short-term rental process to understand her frustrations as well as my own. Issues were bound to happen without better understanding, clear communication, and respect for all parties involved. It could very well be this recent exposure is a crossroads to challenge the status quo. Calling for a recall does not solve the problem when it gets replaced with the same repeating pattern. There is no going back. There is no standing still. There is only moving ahead with a good attitude for responsible growth with competent management leading the way. It seems a code of ethics has only been adopted for the planning commission when it should apply to all elected officials. I have given you a copy of the Custer County Code of Ethics, and I do want to point out that it really is the same code of ethics that the planning commission has. I've just removed the planning commission words and put in Board of County Commissioners and elected officials. As the preamble reads, "The citizens of unincorporated Custer County are entitled to have fair, ethical, and accountable local government which has earned the public's full confidence for integrity. I believe we may have lost that confidence a long time ago. I am hopeful a conversation might get started based on the recent civic capacity index survey results which had low marks for county governance, but very high marks for social cohesion. It could very well provide a golden opportunity for community-driven change to break old patterns and support new ones. What can we aspire to do in 2022? Our past does not determine our future. The future is determined by how we interact in the present together." Our past does not determine our future, the future is determined by how we interact in the present together. Let us choose civility and kindness to one another and have a happy new year. Thank you for listening.
Good, thanks. Alright, there was another handout. I thought. Welcome, welcome home Reggie. No other, no other questions? Thank you. Alright. Unfinished business. You think, Kevin?
No, sir.
I don't think I do, do you, Tom? Alright. Gosh, we're on time. The new business, all these uh items are, there are six of them on our calendar today, just so everybody's aware of it. I don't have a copy of the agenda, is there, did we make copies?
Yes, they're right on the table.
Okay, so they're there. Each item will be voted on and there'll be public comment offered to everybody. Keep the comments limited to three or four minutes if we can. And uh, we'll, we'll press down the pan. So uh, we're gonna consider approving invoices and payroll uh initially and then we're gonna go through uh. At the artest of uh, for Andrews Committee, will be the second on the agenda. I know that's why several people are here. So we need to get through the uh payroll and invoices first, however, so let's bring that up and Lisa, you're gonna present then?
I am. Hello, everybody. I'm John Dan. Um, before I even begin, I want to talk to you about, we don't have a report for payroll. And I don't know if Braden came in and talked to you about that at all.
We said it last time, it was, there was an issue.
There is, well, it's, it's almost resolved, we have to have it done today. It's regarding a conversion with the retirement and so we have to have those numbers perfectly. Now set before we push them over by tomorrow. So he was suggesting that he can bring that and discuss it with the employee report when he does that next.
With every employee report.
They, you don't do that in January.
Okay, so.
We may need to just put that on the mid-month then, so that. But I know how that resolution came out.
Okay.
So we'll add that as the first item of business. What is it, the eighteenth? Is that our meeting date?
It's nineteen nineteen. Nineteen twenty-one. There. We just don't, we talked, we've been talking about it for days now and we just cannot figure out. What, what is happening and why certain amounts are being pushed at the same time, you know, and it's. It's like a needle in a haystack, really, but he's getting close.
The C I C guys are here for renovating.
They're gonna be here on Monday, so I don't know if he'll talk to them about that, but unfortunately, we have to have it as best as reconciled today. So um, we'll get it, we're almost there. So, other than that, um. Typical accounts payable month, there was a lot of bills this month because people are burning through their budgets.
If I may then uh, on uh, page six. There, there is a purchase of a two thousand twenty-two.
Holy moly.
And I didn't know Jackie was driving into.
No. No, she's not. Holy cow.
So, I just thought I would ask about that one.
Oh yeah, well, we can void that and reissue it to the sheriff's department.
I thought that might be where.
Oh my goodness.
I wanna get one free. I wanna get one free.
Oh my god. Well.
Somebody made a typo.
Yeah.
I wish I could buy one for that. Less than forty thousand dollars.
Right, what a deal, huh? So we'll take care of that as soon as possible.
So. Thank you, Mr. John Elway.
Kidding, holy moly.
That where it came from? Elway's out of business and sold that.
Oh, really?
Well, you can see how he's got different branches, so.
That was the only major question I had. I did see somewhere for human services where everything's redacted. A page or so before that, I think there was, and I couldn't find it a minute ago. Uh, where it's supposed to say Custer down there on the lower left of the page somewhere, it says sister, it's CI. And it's good to see you, but at that, neither here nor there. The only thing I really.
Oh, so that was in DHS's and unfortunately, um, when I get. Human services or in other departments, a lot of times they'll do final approval and so they'll just go in a queue. And then, and then I can't take any, I can't make any changes.
I think it was just before human.
So that would then.
Going through it last night and I highlighted it, but then naturally it didn't save it on my email.
I have the airport right before.
So.
Well, I'll go through it back and see if I can find it.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it was right before.
But I didn't notice who owned it.
It wasn't very far above it, just a page or two, so it'll, it'll be right in there somewhere between, say, forty-seven and fifty-one.
Oh, okay.
That's not too many.
No.
So. I think it was under vendor.
And vendor description.
Who was it for?
Oh, I see it, I see it. That was through O M C, that was, that was, it's on page forty-six, the very last line. So I don't know if I can go back and then change that or, um, and since we've printed checks, I don't know if Adrian can go back and change that either. But I do see it.
Okay. Yeah, and it doesn't make a, a difference other than that.
Yeah, it's not a vendor name, so.
No, it's just, yeah, it's just the. Description on the line item. Okay, I do see it though.
Oh, it jumped out at me, so.
Well, you know what?
Way to jump, Kevin.
That's pretty good.
So I just read the first and the last. Made it, made it look good.
Okay, are there any other questions about anything in here?
I have a question, I thought the rent increased on. Public health's building, but I see the amount in terms of events to say that has been the last couple of years.
Okay, and um. The Custer County Kids Council have found a place to rent now too. They're over in the Wellness, Angry Wellness Building. And their rent is three hundred a month. And this was the first where they, let me see it in here.
It's a good question, how do, somehow the invoice has to get to you, so that rent increase would have been to who?
To public health.
Right, so would they get it first?
Yes, they would see it, so from my understanding, as Rhonda would see it and she would process the invoice and then.
It's been processed, yeah.
Hmm, well, it has been, everything's been pushed through. As far as I know, it's the same, nothing, nothing was glaringly different to me, but I can go back and check and see and verify that for you. When we get back. So that was for public health.
And so it's supposed to be twelve hundred dollars instead of a thousand, but I'm looking.
Okay.
Back here.
Would be nice. Maybe there is one cheat sheet on the. Department numbers now that are all lined up here, it's easier to find.
No, no.
You had like an index.
You know, and I don't know, um.
I have to do that by hand.
Right, and this is what I ended up doing, I just took little tabs at each, because it is, it is hard to find them, right?
Said, uh, Public Health Department's number blah blah.
Well, maybe that rate increase starts in January, because I see November on our accounts payable, it was still a thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's probably.
That's wrong.
Yeah, I will, I'll get that, um. I'll ask her if she can forward us some sort of documentation as far as that is increased.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so, yeah, we should have that.
Okay, anything else? Comments, fellers?
Just really happy Kevin saw that John in ways.
I assumed it was the sheriff's being probably got posted in your own spot, and I saw it on. Put two and two together.
That we approved the accounts payable uh as corrected.
There you go.
Been moving second to approve the accounts payable and payroll as corrected. Any other discussion? All in favor, say hi, Tom.
Hi.
Yeah, I can, I. Darn it, first item's out and it only took seven minutes.
Seven minutes?
To record.
Thank you, I don't see all of you happy.
You can come back again.
I will, I will, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you send me those reports? Usually I get them, but I didn't get them either. I did not get them, we'll leave them. Oh, you bet.
Tell me, I asked a quick question.
Oops, I hear you now, go ahead. Who is that? Identify yourself.
Uh, this is Adrian O E M and we did recognize that um typo. Uh, for sist, we don't even know how you pronounce it, sister instead of customer and we attempted to change that, but we weren't unable to do that in the system.
Thank you.
That's probably uh required two, two other C I C guys to come back in three months.
Kevin, thanks for catching that.
Thanks, Adrian. Okay, uh, who's up? Uh, Andrew, you're gonna do the talking?
Yes, would you like me to move up here for the benefit of the.
Yeah, just, it doesn't have to be that close, you can push back if it's more possible.
Alright.
So, I'm Andrew Zeller, I'm the ARPA Recommendation Committee Chair. Glad to have Carol, who's on the committee, and Marcy. Although she's considered alternate, she's, her input has been extremely valuable. And then Tina has been very helpful also. Each time that we've been delayed to come before you, we have been able to improve what we have. That's coming before.
Ask you to come back again.
Okay, so it's approved. So. What uh, I hope was sent to you, I.
We got the latest.
Okay. It, there's a.
It was good.
One document is a letter that we would publish in the papers. And then two documents are applications. It's two documents, one application is for households. And the other is an application for businesses and entities of various sort organizations. We thought that the household application did not need to be as detailed as one for the. Uh, organizations, public entities and businesses and so we just separated them, made them two different applications. Um, in regard to some of the details that are here, maybe you've read it through and don't need to need summary. We're looking at receiving the applications starting the first of January until March thirty-first. It gives applicants a three-month period to pull together the application and the documents substantiating. Their need. We're looking, we mentioned in the cover letter, our interest in. Uh. Applications for support for sustainable development, what does that mean? We're, we're hoping not to uh encourage applications for something that would be consumed. Consumable, just, just gets burned up, but that will really help support. It might be something that depreciates, but it might be something that uh really helps with, you might call it infrastructure. Whether it's a household or of, or of organizations, of course, that's just preference, it's not a requirement. Um. Let's see. In, on page one of the applications and the page ones are the same for both the household as well as the. Entity application. Um, it's my understanding or our understanding from the documents that. Recipients have until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four to complete. Uh, a project. And so we've got a long time for this to uh go on. I'm open to other interpretations of that date. If you all have, it's like on page six of this document. Multiple cost timeframe and they've got a December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four date here. Uh, as to when things are due, that's why, where we got that date from. It's, that's right, I think the reason is, we get another.
Slow, you know, put into the treasury on the first, I mean, they were different dates and that's why I just give them more time. But the whole point is you could have a big project that could last three years. Give them time to complete.
Sure, um, we, we're thinking that. Uh, having two categories of value of projects. We arbitrarily chose a ten thousand dollar amount that those that are less than ten thousand dollars don't need to. Present as much documentation as those that would be over. We'd be open for some input on that as to whether or not you think that's a good figure or not. We talked about five thousand, ten thousand, we just settled on ten thousand. It's not something that uh, we know exactly why we chose it other than, we just thought. Need to have something that, there could be some huge projects that would like more than ten thousand dollars. We'd like to have a little more. Uh, I guess, support as well as the accountability for that, where something less, maybe not as much. Uh, need for.
Well, uh, let me make a quick comment.
Yeah.
Just my thought, not just on that, it's, how are you, are you gonna bank these? You're gonna take several applications, put them in bins and save them up, because what could happen is you get a thousand single. Three thousand dollar entries and you don't have enough to do a big project that might have been better, more beneficial. How do you, how you propose you rank and, yeah, and read them and make sure we get the biggest bank or our small, we don't have a lot.
Right, and that's why we're thinking, if we've got a three-month window to receive applications, then we start processing them. After we've got them all in hand, we'll be able to prioritize. And work with them all, because then we'll have in front of us. Everything that we're needing to have to work with.
What's sort of laying out, my mind is, you see more money, you saw what happened, at least we just had Tina give another fifty thousand bucks for. COVID relief stuff, that's additional stuff. This relief fund, I think there's gonna be more coming, at least in the C I C or the C C I meeting we had. Uh, there's that uh, the, the medical part of the money for uh, other things is gonna be available soon. That you gotta be careful not to conflict with because, you know, getting counseling, I forget what it was called, I have to get my notes from it. So that's a new, that's the money that the state got. The county's got theirs, the state got theirs, and now the state's processing all there, and they're gonna be sending down things on it and giving more grants to. Spend on other things, so you don't want to lose the applications you got just because it didn't make your cut initially. But it might be reranked with the other money that the state's gonna present to them.
No, that's, we don't have eyes on that, we just have eyes on the ARPA money, so that's about all that we are gonna work with at this point. But yeah, I don't think we'll trash applications, although that would be very good to hold on to them with the priority list. What we would like to ask is for you all to have a up or down vote on what we've got before you today. The committee, I, it's been a pleasure working with everybody on the committee. We work well together, I believe. And we've got unity in regard to this being a good letter, two good applications. The timeline is flexible, just kind of gives you an idea of what we were looking at two or three months ago, and now we've moved the dates a few times. Our plan would be to go through all the applications in April and make recommendations to you in April. Knowing that the rest of the funds are coming in just the following May.
Other discussion, Ken?
I would just. That's not the right word to use. I have a comment, use it, I get in trouble.
You think?
This, you have a January 1 to March 31 application window and then the then you will go through those. And then after that, then an app, another application window would open up until, or is that?
No, we're just thinking one application window for the whole project. We've got enough interest out there already to take all the, all the funds.
I'm sure you do. That's why you don't have. Don't lose them because you're going to be busy with the other money that's coming. This, I'm good. This second bit, you, did you think?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Danny.
Could Andrew give me an example of a project that would be something that would work for this? I mean, you said you didn't want it to be consumable, but what would be an example of a project that would suffice for these funds?
Yeah. Some of the, some of the funds that have already been, some of the projects that have already been funded with these were radios for emergency management. Valley assisted living was short financially because, directly because of COVID issues. And they could not repopulate their population of, of the COVID issues. Yeah, affordable housing is a huge issue that both the school and the sheriff's office are interested in. And.
I have, I have requests like, but I don't have requests. People talk to me about the tennis courts, the tennis courts need to be. And also there's going to be an application, I know, for the oh, what's our gym up there? Because they're having some major problems there with some of their own equipment. So I'm not saying this is what, but this is what people are thinking.
So it's things that will benefit the community in the long run.
Yes.
With, like not feeding them.
Sustainability.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Not feeding, yeah, yeah.
There have been programs within the community that have been hurt because of COVID. And that's what we're trying to help.
More people, just one or two.
Thank you.
No, I wonder if you're aware of additional funding coming for mental health or, or health department kind of things, if you can let us be aware of that.
Yeah.
So that as we're prioritizing, there may be a request that we've got that's going to be better served or something that you're aware of.
Why I brought it up.
So, yeah, so if you guys have some way of encapsulating that before the end of March.
Yes.
And letting us know that we, we've got that in the back of our minds.
I got the handouts that we were given and the points of contact. They haven't started distributing those funds yet. They just talked to, they had the whole board of health, the Colorado Department of Health and Environment presented all this and here they listed out the three or four major categories of millions of dollars that are going to go to the different cap that are available for the counties to have through the state process.
Okay, just so that we don't fund something out of our small pot.
Bigger pot. Terrible waste.
Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you'll apprise us of that and as that process was on, because we're not going to meet till April.
So I thought I didn't bring it with me. I should have brought.
Let us know what you, what you know.
And within the plan here, Tino, well, not Tina now, yes, I'm really sorry to hear that you're needing to go. Step down, but our plan was.
We tried to twist her arm and we tried to think of different ways people go and we just can't.
So we'll need to establish another receipt, recipient of applications. Yes, because I guess still somehow people send it to the courthouse. It'll put, we put in the file somewhere.
Mailbox.
Still go to Tina, we'll figure out, we'll watch Tina's mailbox. For now, it'll be good.
Yeah, because I think he had on their BOCC advent.
Right, that's it.
As opposed to Joe, so.
Yeah. What other questions you have, service?
Anybody else? Comments? I like what I see. This is, this is good. Guys, you did, you did approve it.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to the committee members that are here and ask you to convey our thanks and appreciation for their work and the number of hours, early mornings.
Very early.
To this point, we appreciate that.
Especially for you. It's hard to drive all that car.
Light yet.
You're welcome. And it's been our privilege to do it. So.
And you're not done. So don't think this is the end.
The good part is, yeah.
Start, yeah, we're just starting, really starting now. This is the tedious part.
It is.
Go ahead, Dan.
How much ARPA money has been received? How much ARPA money is being?
The total was like almost a million, it's 490.
We currently receive, we have in-house 492,000, but they've spent some of that already. And then the next 492,000 will be coming the day of 2020.
Okay, and then how was the committee chosen? Just did the BOCC.
We, we had, we had many people that were recommended to each of us in our districts and throughout Pastor County and we put them on the table. We went through them. We wanted to diverse backgrounds, different representation of different back of businesses, people, et cetera. And that's, we've got a very good, how many do we end up with?
There's five on the committee plus.
Plus Marcy is a.
Five plus Marcy.
She was a, she's a fill in when other people couldn't make the meeting and to keep it progressing.
I want to make a correction. The total amount that was received was 492,200 dollars. And as Andrew had mentioned earlier, we had given money to Valley Assisted Living and the and then the other for the radio. So we currently have a balance of 397,808 dollars and 90 cents.
Right.
Just then, going forward, until we get the rest of the money in.
The total amount when both infusions of money will come, or, yeah, will be 984,000. The total remaining when we have both infusions is 868,609.
Thank you.
One thing, one thing to think about it is by the way, just so everybody knows, that was my population based on how many people are in the county. And each person got 10 bucks or 100 bucks, whatever it was. That's how they did it. And that's why Colorado Springs ended up with several million. And Trinidad ended up with several hundreds of thousands and we ended up with a minute.
We like the small population.
In some ways, that's okay. In some ways. That thought I had was that the relief on the COVID thing, the applications could be similar. I mean, help. Because we, we had another process set up to this, similar to this, to that people that wanted to be reimbursed for their COVID expenses. I don't know what the rules are on this third tranche. Is it the same?
Uh, that, that money was money that we'd already spent. We just got.
That's what I thought. And that's just the reimbursement.
That was just the reimbursement. So it's not an addition.
Not, I thought they had some others that they. Okay.
So I would move, we accept the recommendations of the ARPA committee, including the proposed documents.
I get to the second. Any other discussion? Anybody online?
No.
Here?
Okay, all in favor, say aye, Kevin.
Aye.
Candice.
Thank you, guys. We'll move forward by publishing this letter in the publications of the county.
Don't forget the online stuff.
Yes.
Valley Beat. Matter of fact, the bit broader you can get it, the better. So if there are other public forums, get them in it.
It, it does say that they'll pick them up here, applications up here. A lot of times it's, it's closed here. How is that going to? I can, I can put a thing out on the outside.
Need to be, you can make an online forum.
I can leave my own. That would probably be better because you're always there. I do know for a fact that you're going to be bombarded probably tomorrow, but it's not officially, I mean, because people are waiting.
Close tomorrow.
Oh. I, because I'll guarantee you, I'll get 10 calls this afternoon, which makes sure it passed.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Yeah, I know that we're kind of leading the way still. I'm very aware of what Trinidad and Los Angeles County's been doing, been talking to this commissioner. They're waiting till then, toward the end of this first quarter where you can get their applications out. But that's, they got a bigger issue in there and they're really caring about businesses. You look at it, there are many businesses that were impacted significantly, losing money back. They can't get bank loans now because they you know, they look at their bank accounts, like you gotta have a certain amount of bank, business bank before they loan you money to keep your cash flow going. And so they're looking hard at that employees 10 to 100 people. And that's the sustainability piece. I think you're looking at one issue. Then there are people that broke individually too. So it's going to be hard to sort of. Good night. Great, great job. Thanks.
Some of us anticipate we will have fewer friends when this is over.
Join a fewer friend club.
But we're on this committee, so we each have five.
We have each other. We'll have a support group between us for the next couple of years.
All right, well, you can hang around if you want.
Committee discuss the residency requirement.
That's a very good point. It was almost assumed that this would.
It is.
Coming from Custer County.
Yeah.
I think that we would throw something out if it came from another county.
Yeah. We, we might as well go into the Springs and start.
Applying.
Put it in our pot.
We had not thought about that. It was a so, this underlying assumption.
It is. Okay. Thanks. All right, we, if you're, you're more than welcome to stay or you can go and find some donuts and bring them back.
Is it the only two options?
All right, thanks. All right. Yeah, it's closed. I went to, I was going to bring some in.
They always take Jen.
Yeah.
My son has some donuts in the back of his pickup truck I saw the other day.
Well.
All right, we got consideration of ratifying the library board members. Is that still valid?
Yeah, and Jenna was gonna be online.
Okay, I don't, is she online? Because I don't see any.
Yeah, Jenna, Jenna is here.
All right, Jenna. So if you want to, do we have a, I don't, is there a list or, or is it going to be?
On that letter that was in your packet.
It is.
Yes, there's two board members that we're requesting ratification of, Richard Hacker and Robert Carter. They're both current board members. We're just requesting a renewal of their three year term with the board.
Forgive me a second. I thought I saw that the other day and had an highlight here and I'm waiting for it.
On the thing, it should say WSCC.
Did it, who did it come from?
WCC, LDT trustee. Terminal. Is that it?
So this is the only thing we got this slide?
Yes.
Why don't you make copies?
We'll be ready here in just a second.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome.
Okay, we got the letter. And the two are expiring tomorrow, they're right?
Current.
And both would like to serve another term through 2024. That's Richard Hacker and Robert Zieg Gardner. Is that how you pronounce his name?
Garter.
Garter, Garter. Both active patrons, library patrons who understand and believe the vision of the organization, their insights and abilities are invaluable. Any comments? Tom, Ken?
Make time good.
Yeah. Well, it's nice to hear wanting to serve. That's appreciated. So I move that we accept the recommendation from Gina to accept the nomination of Richard Hacker and Robert Garter as board members, library. In moving second to accept the recommendation as presented, any discussion? Debbie?
I just want to make a public comment that we have an awesome library. I love our library.
And people actually reading books and not online.
Now, it's, we're, we're fortunate for a smaller community to have such a great library. So thank you for that.
Any other comments? Any, let's vote. All in favor, say aye, Ken.
Aye.
Candice.
Aye. Thank you.
Gina, thanks for getting this to us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Did you get the original letter back?
No, but that's okay.
You want it colored?
I ask a question. What's the difference with the library board with members being ratified versus next month? When you approve recommendations on other boards?
It's a separate district.
Oh, okay.
They appoint their own. The commissioners ratify that.
Okay, got it.
We're still accountable for the care and feeding.
You're, you're accountable for the care and feeding of everything.
That's right. Okay, so next up on the agenda, then moving right along here, doing well, is consideration of transfer of funds from the general fund of the Conservation Trust Fund.
That's me.
That's going to be you this time. I was the one that wanted to do it. All right, go ahead, Ken.
So this is transferring $346.31 from County General Fund to the Conservation Trust Fund. And what it is, is, um, do this at the end of every year, it's the interest that was during the year on that conservation.
Okay. I move that we transfer the funds, present $346.31 from the County General Fund to the Conservation Trust. Second. Been moved in second to transfer the money as presented 346.31 Conservation Trust Fund. Any other discussion? conservation trust fund. Any other discussion? We all in favor, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Kevin? Aye. Camden, aye. Thanks, Kevin. We missed out of the chute, transfer again from the airport. Is that gonna be you too, or?
Yes. And so this one is just money that they have spent through the, throughout the year, outside of their budget. It's like their fuel and stuff. And usually they do that, never they get it, but we just did it in my mom's sum this year. So 15,000 from county general fund to the airport.
I would move and transfer 15,000 from general fund to airport.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second to transfer the $50,000 of the airports money that was accumulated as presented from the county general fund to the airport fund. Any other discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye, Kevin.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Camden, aye. Okay, here comes the one I don't want to talk about. This is Tina's resignation letter. And in it, is it all right if I read it?
Yes.
Okay. So dear commissioners, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as the administrative assistant for the board of county commissioners and the board of health for Custer County. My last day will be Monday, January the third, 2022. This announcement comes with a heavy heart, as I have enjoyed my time at Custer County. I will greatly miss my coworkers and friends that I have made while working here. Due to health reasons related to COVID, I'm not able to continue to work a 16-hour week, much less a 40-hour week, should my health improve. I appreciate you allowing me to apply for an open position in which I would qualify for Custer County in the future. That's why I'm saving the coffee warmer. Yeah, it's really unfortunate that COVID hit her pretty hard and it has been a long road to get her back where she could even come to work. And it turns out that doctors are looking at it for her benefit and I'm sure she's gonna have hers too, but she needs to lighten up the heavy load of moving and causes to come in here and argue with us and to work and come up to that area. And her loans are still getting scarred because of that. So they want her to stop and relax and gonna get her lung issues built up again and get it to be oxygenated better. She has made a lot of improvements or she wouldn't be here. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. She, I, it sure is a terrible loss. I've had many administrative assistences, assistance throughout my career in the air force and in the both Lockheed, Raytheon and the other jobs that I've had. And there's none better than Tina and how well she has done her job. She's truly an executive assistant administration administrator. And on top of everything. And we added an extra burden to her and that was great, right? You know, she can, and we never really corralled all our grants together. I mean, they were scattered from one building to another, one person that was personality related and we did no way to understand. Matter of fact, some of our grants didn't even get applied for reimbursement. Because we, we didn't, we spent the money, it was in the treasury, we spent the treasury of the county and then, then whoever was accountable, lost track, didn't know it or they moved or whatever happened. Now we've got a system that Tina has put into place to make it doable and, and we want, we need that money because, you know, and I've said it before, it's a $7 million budget with a 700 or $7 million bunch of grants to support it. Everybody thinks we're getting by on $7 million, fool themselves, the tax money. We do a lot with, with the grants, so that's a big deal. So thank you, Tina, for the extra great job. Oh, the heavy heart, I accept that. Let's, Danny, go ahead, Danny.
We all know how this came about and I am wondering if the board of county commissioners would consider a public apology to show regret for the harm that Tina is suffering because of the decisions made by the OCC.
Thank you for bringing that up.
No, a regret, because I know that you, you, you know, had a meeting, a lot of people were here, that's where she contracted it. And you were asked if you had any regrets for your decision and you said no, but you really should have at least one for harming Tina. Just a simple apology, that's all. It, it's not too proud to just say, I'm sorry for the actions and the consequences. It's a consequence. It's an apology. You really can't give one.
Good, we, go ahead.
I think that it's important to keep in mind that though there is speculation that that meeting might have been where it occurred, there's no proof that that is where it occurred. So that, I think that is important to note.
And I, I agree, that's the case. And in fact, we were taking precautions, taking personal responsibility and therefore, I agree, we're not gonna, I am not gonna issue a public apology. I am, I am very sorry she got sick personally. I mean, that was a terrible thing to happen. But it happened to everybody, including me, including Tom, including Kevin, we all caught it.
Your health hasn't been as impact.
I, I understand. So let's, that's the way it is.
Okay, so you don't apologize, okay.
But thanks for bringing it up.
So noted.
So. All right. Okay, moving, Tina, do you have any other, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, then like I said, my letter, you know, I've made plans and you're working with everybody and, you know, I'm sorry I have to leave, but I have to do what's best for me and my health.
Well, I expect you back.
Well, I, like I said earlier, you gotta have a call. My goal is to be able to, you know, work on top again one of these days.
So that means we have to do a couple of things. You're gonna have to find a replacement for your committee. And that'll help in the end, or maybe there's a way to handle that until we do get a new administrative assistant. And then we need to advertise the position as soon as we can. And I think I don't know if Brayden and Lisa can get that in the papers. Do we want to discuss that now? We can, I think, given this, the sooner we get it out, the better it is. I don't want to wait till mid-month and get it out, do you?
I think we need to take formal action on the resignation.
Yeah, I, I thought you were gonna move. We're gonna, so I, I was gonna move, first of all, in order to do that, I move that we accept your letter of recommendation. In this letter.
I think you mean resignation, not recommendation.
Resignation, but I said recommendation. Yeah, her letter rega- resignation. Been moved in second, any discussion?
I'd just say sorry to see you go. And, but I appreciate your circumstances and you owe it to yourself and to your family to be there rather than be here and.
I appreciate your understanding.
And thank you very much for everything that you have done.
Frankie.
Yeah. The motion could be amended, saying with thanks, with thanks. Okay, I, I I would move to thank you, and to modify the motion, to include with thanks.
Thanks for her dedicated service.
Dedicated service and Kevin, you want to amend your second?
Tom, it was seconded.
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept Tina's resignation with thanks for the job well done. All in favor, say aye, Kevin. Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Okay. Contract time. Consideration of sheriff's contract with the town of Westwood. And who's bringing that in, Tina? Is that?
That was Kelly.
Kelly, you?
Yeah, Kelly gave it to me and I put it on your desk.
There should be three copies, they're all paper clipped together.
All the same copies, but you need to sign three sets.
Seven pages, swooch. Yeah, I got it here.
What, what do they all do?
Uh, give them back to me and then I'll get them. One goes to the sheriff, one goes to Westwood, one stays with us.
Okay, this agreement is entered into on Thursday, January 2022 between the town of Westwood, Colorado Municipal Corporation here and to refer to as the town and the board of county commissioners, Custer County, Colorado. Here in collectively referred to as the county. So it goes through the recitals for that. It does the same thing for Silver Cliff. This is just Westwood's contract. The other one that I had is for the town of all Westwood, right?
They're all Westwood.
Okay.
We approved the sheriff's contract with Silver Cliff or Westwood, the amount of $57,630.
Fifty-seven, six.
Fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars.
It's been moved in second to accept the contract with the sheriff for the town of Westwood, amount of $57,630. Any discussion? This was the same, was it a little more than last time? About the same price.
No, didn't kick it, why not?
Didn't go up and. Okay, any other discussion, anything online? Okay, all in favor, say aye, Tom.
Aye.
Kevin? Aye. Camden, aye. I'll give these back to everyone who's been. Okay. Been an hour and fifteen minutes. Next up, last up is consideration of the indemnification agreement with Custer County housing market study. And I think Charles, is Charles online?
Yes, I'm here.
Want to talk to this?
Um, it is more background, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority has been supporting the housing board and has contracted with RCAC to give us consultation for support. And as part of that tasking, CHAFA will fund RCAC in a study. And that'll be funding directly from RC, from CHAFA to RCAC. But the CHAFA came up with this requirement that basically says that we won't hold CHAFA liable for the results of this study. It's a new requirement as far as I'm aware of. I see no problem in it because in all truthfulness, they'll do the study and it's, it's our board's decision on how we utilize that information anyway. So I've submitted it to legal for review. I have had no detrimental response from him, so I would recommend that the B O C C approve this proposed requirement.
Hey, thank you, Charles. Let me, we had a legal review here also with our acting attorney, Dan Slater. Let me read what he said. So that everybody's, it's on record. So what he points out here is what Charles said. He read the agreement. It basically just says that the county won't sue CHAFA if there's something wrong with the study that they're paying for. It also says if someone else sues CHAFA for something wrong with the housing study, that the county agrees to step in and defend CHAFA. The only issue is section five, where the county is agreeing that the agreement is confidential and that it won't disclose the terms, quote, unless legally required to do so, end of quote. I'm not sure why a state agency is requesting this. It seems to fall under the Colorado Open Records Act. I don't think the concern should stop the county from adopting this agreement though, and we could deal with any confidentiality concerns at a later date if someone were to file a CORA request for a copy of that agreement at, at the, at that time. And, and, and he says presumably with the discussion with CHAFA at that time about that request. So he recommends that he doesn't see any reason why we shouldn't adopt the agreement either. It is odd, the way, I don't understand the confidentiality thing either. I don't know what you would say in that, that would cause the, you know, that not to be known. It's everybody, anything dealing with money, every, the citizen has the right to know about it and amounts, et cetera. Well, that's his comment. Any other discussion? Have we haven't gotten a motion in?
Charles, what do you think about the confidentiality requirements?
I, I don't understand the requirement of the whole thing, let alone that Bureau truthful. It I, I don't, I don't personally, as far as the board's concerned, I don't consider it an issue. And I agree with the chairman that if we have some external input on it, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Well, certainly a part of me wants to send this back and get this confidentiality clause straightened up, but if you don't think it's an issue, I don't think legally we can keep the term to this agreement confidential myself.
Anybody could request it like he, Dan said, and we would all through with a CORA request.
Okay, can we strike section five and sign that and send back to them for their signatures?
Or I would go forward if we do that. I'll go against it if we don't. Because unless we just want to send it back to them with a note of concern, anyone?
I think we gotta, I think it's, I had the same, same thought too, until Dan pointed out that you can deal with the confidentiality later when it comes, it becomes an issue. Because it has to be released to the public in the CORA request.
I would certainly accept and support the B O C C striking that clause and signing it with that condition.
It is an odd request.
Yeah, Charles, I do say unless legally required, do so and only to the extent so required. There's no terms in here that's I just think it's unnecessary. I'd move to strike section.
Yeah, and why is it there?
Section. Well, section five, I guess, statement five of concerning confidentiality. And approve afterwards.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the agreement with the.
Did you get it, so?
Right? Yes.
Okay.
With the exception, or with the change of striking section five. Uh, I think it's a result of a boilerplate, to tell you the truth. Was in, in the, in a contract and it was in there. There's nothing that I see on these two pages. It's confidential. Any other discussion? Okay, so can we get the, I'll sign it.
Yeah, we're done. Quick, go ahead and quick question for Charles. Who does this go back to, Charles? Do you know?
Uh, it'll go back to CHAFA.
This is the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority signs it afterward.
Do we know who we're mailing it back to?
Uh, give it to me and I'll get it to Caroline Tranny, who's our regional manager. That's where it came from.
Let's just do it and see what they do. I don't think there's any issue.
I agree.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor of signing the indemnification, indemnification agreement with CHAFA with the, uh, modification as, uh, required, requested of striking item five. Say aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Kenda, aye. So Kelly, you can get a copy and sign.
Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional items of business?
Yeah, I have.
You had, oh, you had that and I'm sorry.
Now we'll have one.
Okay, Kelly, go ahead. Go ahead.
We spoke some at the last meeting, uh, possibly sharing this room here. And I was wondering if we would like to visit and set up some kind of a, a schedule for the three of us to be able to be in here. Uh, I don't know how that would look, uh, but I'm I think so, though we don't have confusion, that we could set up some kind of a schedule for.
Like what I've seen in the past, there should be a, this is a, this is a conference room and people can schedule it. Maybe we just need a conference room scheduled. Cause it's gonna be more just us. It's a matter of, uh, who wants to use this room? So. Got a calendar, I know, but it, uh, it needs to be, usually you see them on the door somewhere, just to, who's got it scheduled for the day? Uh, cause sometimes this room is locked.
We make it outside the door.
Yeah. That'd be a good thing to do. Uh, and then they have to go get the key, you know, from, who, who would have the key, Kevin?
I have a key.
You got, I know you do. And your office can be the keeper of the key for the use of this room. It's a good idea.
Well, then we have keys to it as well.
We gotta, we don't, we don't even go get her, but we can, as long as it's not being booked by some committee or something, then we need to book it.
And then just, I think if we could set up some sort of a schedule and then if we do have overlapping times or something, we just make sure that we've got an open door. So that there's no appearance of of collusion or doing deals in behind closed doors on it.
Hmm? Speaking of keys.
Thanks, you turned them in.
Give me.
Wait a minute, you're not done.
Give me, sir. I'm not a system, would you?
You could be here on New Year's Eve, by the way.
What about an online calendar?
Is that online?
Well, we have an online.
We need, I think the, uh, there are other conference rooms here. We ought to do the same thing, like the break room or whatever. Is that the only other conference room we have?
Well, the break room is really the courts.
Yeah, it is. It's the jury room. So we ought to have a schedule on that so we know.
Well, they, we don't mess with the court.
But we ought to know that it's not booked, it is not bookable.
Well, when you, if we want to use it, we ask them.
Yeah.
So they would be the keeper of the schedule.
They got the schedule.
Yes.
There's, uh, what about the, uh, VSO building?
It has a calendar also.
Over there. It does, right? That's good.
We got it under.
Yeah, so we do. I like it.
Because to that point, uh, the actions of the other day were not intended to keep anyone from being here.
Right.
And, uh, it should not be as such. And so, but I think if we had a schedule that then, or a calendar that we can use, then we could, uh, we could, uh, make it work a little more efficiently.
So, uh, Tina can, is it possible, if, where would you post it online on, on the county whips? Is there a way to make it with Jordan and figure that out?
Possibly.
Cause that's easier than if, if I called in and said, I'd like to be here on Tuesday. And Kelly, somebody would have to walk down the hallway and see if anybody's written it. We could, but then we'd have to keep that online one up to date with the wall. Want to think about it? Yeah?
Me?
Yeah. I don't know. She just retired. No, I don't mean you to keep the calendar, but we need to.
So I don't know that there's that much of a conflict with other people using it as much. What I want to address is us three so that we can use this room and, uh, if there's somebody else that needs a room, that's fine and wonderful. But my main concern is, is our usage of the room. And I think we're trying to make it a little more convoluted than I need to.
Kevin, I agree with you. I don't think it's more convoluted, because if you and I wanted to use this room someday and, and the art committee had already scheduled it, I'm not gonna put them out of here. Cause they've already scheduled it. I know that they've got it. That's all my point is. Yeah. So between us, we can, uh, pick, uh, the day that, I mean, I can't decide, I don't know what day I would ever, you know, cause I, if I come in and go is what I had some other meeting to do or something else. I don't know if we can, unless you want to pick a standard time that will always be dedicated to you or me and Tom.
Well.
Maybe that'd be a.
Because it's good for, uh, for one of us to be around in case issues arise. And so I don't want to leave it empty for extended period of time.
I hear you. I don't, in the past, everybody, we should make sure everybody has our phone number and then I, you guys have, nobody's ever hesitated to call me and if, if nobody's around to have me come to town and sign anything. That's all I'll do it, as long as I'm here. Uh, I, I like the idea of having a day, if you want to pick a day of the week, uh, that you're gonna be around and I can pick a day of the week. Any other thoughts? We're gonna have to make sure that people know. And that's why it needs to be posted.
So, so are you guys saying basically that you want to pick like one day of the week that you'll be here every week? Or something? And then that could just be a regular calendar, calendar that's updated and posted on.
Could be, and, uh, and it can, that can get ripped off easy because people keep calling us and, uh, we go and do other things, but and we're gonna have to make sure that they know that the room is open for somebody else to eat. We can manage that ourselves, I guess.
We could have kind of a standing schedule and if other things arise, that's fine and wonderful. But, uh, if that way people are aware of of when we're here and, and who's here that they might need to talk to or whatever. So that's, I just think that that would be a.
You got an idea.
Very good idea. I could work around most, any of the schedules for, if, uh, I would defer to let you guys choose days and I would choose as what's left or out of the what's left or whatever. And, uh, you know, we could do, each of us do a day and then we have two days where one of the other could be in or whatever.
Or not be here.
Or, you know, have to be. We don't have to, you know, but I think we need to be here.
I, I volunteer for months.
Okay.
If I can.
You guys tell me.
You have a preference, sir? So I could do. We want to do it like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday then, and then just have the others open to whoever needs to be here.
Yeah. Works for me. It's good. Which day do you want?
I could do Wednesday or Friday. I would do a Wednesday.
I'm good with Friday.
Whatever you guys decide, I'm good with.
I'm willing on whatever happens.
The other two days, if there's a need, we'll be here.
We'll keep them open. For sure. So, aye. Tina's good with anything now.
Uh, and real quick for a turnover, do you, Vernon is getting someone from the phone service to check on our phone line in this office because it was not going to voicemail as well. So it would ring fifteen, twenty times and never shuts up.
Yeah.
So, uh, anyhow, just for your information, I'm done.
You sure?
Yes.
If I may, Kelly, before you get on your deal, Kelly, uh, are you working on the third?
No, I'm taking my vacation day.
Cause they asked us not to use the network on, on the third.
I think it's your new war road that's got you going. Get your up, Kelly.
So, uh, we need to change some precinct boundaries. And, uh, statue. I am the.
It'd be happy honor.
Some that gets to do that.
If you don't do it, we outvote you somehow.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I make the changes and then you guys approve those changes. So I'm sort of torn um, here about how to make my changes. I've got two different scenarios. So you've got a map there. Um, yeah, that's the current one. Uh, so you can see the colored areas are the precincts and, and that's labeled on there what it is. Um, and then, uh, um, this line, this red line is the commissioner line. Which my lines that I made on there sort of covered some of the red lines.
What do you mean commissioner?
Cause the commissioner line doesn't, for commissioner districts, it doesn't follow the precincts.
Oh, I see.
It used to.
And the red line is the commissioner district.
Yes. So we're just talking precincts right now.
Okay.
So, um, by statute, we're not supposed to have more than fifteen hundred active registered voters per precinct. Um, we can, with your approval, go up to two thousand. So I gave you a little, um, the one, the piece of paper that says precinct boundary change. I gave you the ca, the current count. So currently precinct one has two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two. Precinct two has a whopping four hundred and sixty-five.
They grow.
Yeah. And precinct three has one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four. So, um, my first thought, when I first looked at this was, um, to add, take a portion of precinct three and a portion of precinct one and add it to precinct two. So that was my, that's my, um, first scenario. And so those are the orange um, outlines on your map there. Um, the top orange piece is in precinct three currently. The bottom orange piece is in precinct one currently. And, um, if we were to do that, it would change precinct one to sixteen, sixty-five. Precinct two to fourteen, twenty-three and precinct three to eleven, thirteen. So that would even make them more uh, even, you know, more along the same. Um, my only concern with that was, um, when we used to vote by precincts, where you actually went to the precinct to vote. Sorry, Kevin.
Um, you could only vote for that precinct.
Yeah, you could only vote in that.
Now, I said we vote for everybody in all the precincts.
Well, you always voted for everybody in all the precincts, but you went to that precinct to vote. And you're caught, and it still is. Your caucus is still in that precinct. So that was my concern is, um, you know, uh, this precinct three area is like Silver Cliff Heights, that precinct two, a lot of it is national forest. So we don't have to worry about that part, but a lot of it takes in the, um, some of the Rosita area. So those people in order to, um, take part in their priest, in their caucus, would have to go to Wetmore. Um, I actually asked one person that happened to be in my office that lives out in that area.
Lives out.
In the Rosita area. Would you have a problem with that? And they said, well, if I wanted to participate in the caucus, I'd go to Wetmore. Um, you know, it's no far, just like they had to go to West Cliff. So that may not be a problem.
What was the rule of two thousand and that weird?
Two thousand, uh, yeah, fifteen. If we go down to fifteen hundred, we're gonna have to probably add another precinct, which I really don't want to do. So my second scenario is the green outlines on there. And, um, we would take, uh, portion of precinct one and move it into precinct three. And it actually kind of follows the, it would follow the, um, commissioner district line then. Um, and it would add, uh, for some reason, the last time they did this, they kind of split West Cliff. So then the whole town of West Cliff would be in precinct three instead of part in three and part in one. And if we did it that way, that would make precinct one nineteen oh one, which we're still, we're pretty close to that two thousand mark still. Uh, precinct two would stay at four sixty-five and then precinct three would be at eighteen thirty-five, which is pretty close too. They did just change the law this year that going forward, once we make these changes, going forward, in order to change it, a precinct has to double in size before you have to change it. So, um, we, that's a bit, I mean, that would be a big change for us. Yeah. So, um, hopefully, once we make this change, it would just stay, yeah, yes. So what my, uh, what I am here for is asking your thoughts on those scenarios.
And then you would bring.
And then, yes, I have a, I have a, um, a resolution done that I just have to put in how we're gonna do it. And then I'll bring that to you guys on the nineteenth to approve.
So your scenario one is precincts match the commissioner districts.
No, scenario one is to add a portion of three, a portion of one to, and it would, um, it would then precinct two would follow the precinct two and district two commissioner would follow the same lines.
Yeah.
Chairman? I have a question. I wonder if Kelly would be able to explain why the precincts and the commissioner districts are not the same. And I'm wondering if in this discussion, it could be helpful to think about bringing them into alignment with each other.
That's what I was trying to get at.
So, um, the reason they are not the same, they were the same up until, I want to say that they changed about twenty-ten. And so, um, precincts are, um, based on active voters, that, those numbers. Um, commissioner districts are based on the census. So that's why they're only looked at every ten years. Mm-hmm. And so, um, we're actually gonna work on the commissioner districts next, but we don't have to have those done until twenty-twenty-four. And so what we'll do is look at the new census numbers and put them all in and then see if we need to change those. And, um, yeah, I'm kind of hoping to align those again, cause I think that would be, and so that, in that case, if we did scenario one, that would take care of precinct two. That would align.
So precincts are just voters, basically.
Yes.
So we're trying to make it convenient for them to caucus together. Is that what the whole point is? Why, why does it matter?
Well, not, it does, it doesn't really. I, I just know that we're probably gonna have a few upset people and although.
The districts don't change.
No, the districts don't change. It doesn't, um, and you know, you might not, in this, in this, uh, area that we're taken out of precinct three, it's got four hundred and seventy-one voters. And then the precinct one has four hundred and eighty-seven voters. So it's gonna affect.
Eight hundred people.
Yeah, nine hundred. Ever take people that that may not even care. They may not participate anyway, but you're gonna have one person out there that's.
I know that there's been in the time. I know that there's been in the time, in times past where people have showed up at a caucus.
Down there thinking.
Down there because they're in district two.
Yes.
But they weren't in precinct two, and so it does create confusion that way, and then by the time they show up there and we tell them, well, you gotta go up to. West Cliff, they're too late to make it before the doors are closed up here, so. I think realigning the the districts and the and the uh precincts.
Would help.
Would be beneficial that way and no matter what you end up doing, somebody's gonna be upset with us.
Yeah.
So uh but I I think that in the long haul. I believe that that might be. More prudent.
And it may give precinct two more people that could participate in that caucus.
Right now, that uh. That line now runs. On either side of, and I can't read the road.
The current line?
Yeah.
Um, it runs down Bear Basin Road to the highway and then the highway to McKenzie Junction and down that.
So those on the east side of of the LC road are in precinct two.
Yes.
And those on the west side are precinct three.
Yes, even though they're all in district two.
Oh, even though they're all in district two, yeah.
I don't know, you know, from my perspective, for me, living with it forever. And a precinct isn't the same as a district anyway. I know I like your scenario one. Also scenario three. Is.
I.
I could see it either way.
Andrew. As a former precinct committee person, I know that every time we've had a caucus. It becomes a time of confusion for those who are somewhat on the lines and or in different districts and it. It does cause a problem and every caucus, it would be cool, it would make it so much easier.
And it's, it's hard at the caucuses to have a problem because just like you said, if you show up in Wetmore. And you have to come up here, you have to be in that room at that time, otherwise you can't vote and.
And that happened this last year.
Yes, that does happen.
It's happened more than just last year. It it happens down there, it seems like.
Every time.
I like, yeah, I always assumed that they were the same, but.
Yeah, they were until the last census and they, yeah. Tom, do you have any comments or thoughts?
No, I. I just see this whole convoluted area around this as being, again, confusing.
That is the town of Silver Cliff line. And that's why it follows that line like that.
There that.
And does it have to follow the city limits?
Just looking for population.
Um. Not necessarily. I think probably when they did that before, they did it. Because like all all of, on my little map here, which you guys can't see, I've got all these different colors, so. Within a precinct, we have precinct splits because you have. Um, like. Like if we, if we cut that line across and made it straight there, then that would make us have another split here where. You'd be in this precinct and. Uh town of Silver Cliff, Round Mountain Water, but you'd be out of, because you take in all of the areas that, and so. That would there's thought that way because it can create more. Ballots sometimes.
I would follow where the recommendation you give us.
I like the precincts lining up.
Well, and when, when we do the commissioner district lines, then we'll we'll look at that and yeah, because I. Because I think we need to do that. This, if we did scenario two, it will align district two and precinct two, yeah.
But not.
But not one and three, yeah, we'd have to still fix them.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
And you're gonna want us to make a decision on the nineteenth?
Yes.
That is pretty convoluted when you go through Silver Cliff and West Cliff. It's too bad that couldn't be, and that.
I guess I could look at. What it would do to change, to do both scenarios, I mean.
In your spare time?
Well, that's that's just it. It's once you guys approve it, I have till February seventh to make all the changes on the computer. For, so they'll be ready for caucus the first uh week of March.
Since we have a lot of late nights.
Okay, I think I.
Back to the drawing board.
Back to the drawing board, yeah. Kevin, you never said which way, either way, do you prefer one way or the other?
As presented with just these two, I think I would prefer option one because it tends to line the districts up with the.
With the precincts.
I think that would. Confusion. That being said, there's a lot of cutouts here on some of that long. Uh Silver Cliff, West Cliff and stuff, I don't know. But if ever change we make, like you say, it makes for more late nights for you in the changeover.
But that could be something that we can change when we do the commissioner districts. Because I I agree that it would be much easier if we were aligned.
When we change the commissioner districts with the precinct lines, change accordingly.
Yeah, or we just change, align the commissioner, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We would just say that we we would just make a resolution to. To make the lines line up together, okay? Don't hate to make a change and then and then turn around and do the commissioner districts and then have them all out of culture again.
Yeah, and I'll kind of look at that, um, just see if we, if I can do something that would save us some time. And effort then.
Okay.
Okay.
Good job, Kelly. I didn't realize, you know, I knew you were working on this and I knew it was time.
Yeah.
I didn't hear this far along.
Luckily, the. Senate congressional and all those won't be a big, they're, because some of those counties are having to do a lot on those. Because they split, they're split, we're just one big.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on and it's a hint to a public comment. Any other comments? Debbie?
Um, from what I brought up earlier, I would like to know if the V O C C will consider on the agenda. To adopt the code of ethics for elected officials?
We did, uh, we did consider that and we've done it in the past, and we do swear uh to the Constitution of the United States. And the ethics that are involved with all that, uh, it's redundant. Now, I don't mind having it posted, I think that's fine. But personally, uh, we've been through it and and everything you've said is.
When you go on the website, the Custer County website and group and search for code of ethics, the only thing that shows up. Is the one that you've adopted for the planning commission, and I don't understand why all elected officials are not held to a code of ethics. The county code of ethics, you wrote it for the planning commission, why doesn't it adhere to elected officials?
Just.
Because you don't need a code of ethics?
We have a code of ethics. We we did.
Where are they? I'm asking because when you go on your website.
Everything you've said is what we've sworn.
It only comes up for the planning commission. That's all that shows up on the county website.
Go to the other counties as well. There's some counties that have uh put, taken things and put it in in what they've had and they published it. We we researched this when that came up two years ago, I think it did. Uh, as a matter of fact, I'll go grab it and and I'll go get the the notes that I've got and the things that was presented at that meeting.
Yeah, I don't really care about other counties. I care about this one.
I do too.
And the, and with the recent situation that came up, it was because there wasn't a code of ethics to adhere to.
That's not true. That is not true. I, yeah, you're calling me unethical, Debbie?
I, no, I am, I am asking that all elected officials of Custer County have a code of ethics to adhere to. I don't think that's being unreasonable.
Well, we we are. I don't, I don't, I don't understand where you're coming from, Debbie. Um, I understand if if the planning commission has, uh, I don't, it's fine.
It's such a simple act that would give confidence to the citizens that elected officials adhere to a code of ethics. When you go on a county website, there is no code of ethics for anyone except the planning commission. And I don't understand why they are held to a code of ethics, but no one else is. That's all I'm saying. I'm not calling anyone unethical. I'm just saying, why isn't there a code of ethics for elected officials? For Custer County?
Yeah, go ahead.
So.
I'm staying up.
With with state statutes and state laws, there should be code ethics already built into that, right? So a planning commission that's not a voted on commission, just like the library board. Or any other board, tourism board, uh. The board that you're, the ARPA board or the ARPA committee should all have a code of ethics posted. So that we know how are they supposed to treat us as citizens, right? So maybe what would suffice the citizens is what is that state statute? That signifies what you guys are supposed to.
And that's exactly right. That's what came up in that last meeting. We, when we swear to uphold the the constitution of this United States and the state of Colorado, we've sworn in. That is, that code of ethics are there, it's part of it. We are, we swear to uphold the laws, we execute the laws, we. We uh do the ethical uh things that are important. And the problem is, and we've got looking at different ways to handle it, every, if I went and looked at every, a lot of counties, it more of ethics. That were put out there and there were, there were some that were uh, you could get down into the nip noise things and it would say, wow. You haven't adhered to this particular thing and the way it's written in the code of ethics, you should be fired. Or you're, you know, you, let's recall you on the, on that. It's, it's, it was too, um, and it wasn't consistent. Either with other counties or with other things, so the one thing that's consistent is the state of Colorado's constitution and the United States constitution. And those requirements that we have have sworn to uphold, period. And that's why uh I would, the way I did when we had that discussion and we didn't go any further with it, the board voted on. At that time, so that's the way it is.
That's the way you're going to keep it. Well, that's the way it is. That's the way you're going to keep it. You you, I don't know if you've even read the code of ethics, which like I said, is the same code of ethics that you put out for the planning commission. And if you read the code of ethics that I have put forward, that you have put forward, that the county has put forward, I just don't understand. A hesitancy to just say we adhere to this county code of ethics.
That's fine, that's good. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other comments?
This is a little lighter note, okay? Uh, I just want the board of commissioners to know that through the generosity of our donors at the Custer County Community Sharing Center. That we uh were able to give out two thousand, about six thousand last Friday, and we still have four thousand more to go. Gift cards to Lowe's, uh, which means they can go and they can shop for their own food. And this is strictly from the generosity of people around here that give lovely to the sharing center.
I did hear that and that was amazing. I'm glad you brought that up.
It's just.
Appreciate it.
That's my response.
Yeah, it is.
They were happy too, I'm sure.
Okay, any other? Okay, here, remember, we don't have an executive session, I believe, you know, so. Anybody wanna move or we wanna stick around here? All right, I adjourn this thing at eleven o'clock on the dot, two hours, thank you. Spin them down and I'll turn my phone on.